Everybody. Good evening, welcome. It's Monday, February 10th, 2025. This is the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority meeting for the month of February. Let us begin. I do not have any welcoming remarks or opening remarks, but we do have an announcement. We want to let everybody know, and we'll discuss this later under new business as well. And I'm not sure whether we need a formal vote on this, but when we get there, maybe we'll have a vote. But anyway, this is the situation. A joint session of the Gettysburg Borough Council and the Board of Directors of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority, GBSWA, will be held on Monday, February 4th, I'm sorry, 24th, 2025, at 6:30 PM at the Gettysburg Municipal Building for the purpose of receiving information regarding the Stevens Run channel walls and to begin discussions on how to repair and maintain the channel walls. We'll discuss this a little bit more at this meeting when we turn to our Borough Engineer, Chad Claybaugh. But that's an announcement. I would like everybody to take a look at the three motions. We have a consent agenda, which is our normal process. A motion to approve the agenda as presented, a motion to approve all bills and payrolls as presented, and a motion to approve the January 13th, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions or make any comments about those three items? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve those items.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any, that passes. Thank you very much. Public comment? We do not have any public here, so no comment. Chad Claybaugh, time to talk about Stevens Run channel walls.
Thank you, Mike. So let me start by saying that the, one of the places that's imminent failure is Bream Alley. That is moving ahead. We had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor that is associated with GMA's Interceptor project, and everything's good to go with that. They are scheduling to do that sometime this summer. It's a 270-day contract. It's going to fit somewhere in the middle of that. I don't know exactly when. I'll keep you up to speed and give you input on that as we know it. Robbie and I went to the pre-construction meeting a month ago, so we do know that that's moving forward. That's the good news. And then I wanted to mention, so, so when I did a presentation, I think Deborah has it up on the screen right now, back in the fall. And if you can remember, we, the way that we left that is, and she has, she has pulled up here, the total number of properties. So the way we left that presentation was just kind of high level. We didn't start getting into identifying specific properties until we got through that process. And I do have a spreadsheet. If you guys, I think it was distributed in your email.
Correct.
I have copies with me tonight. If anybody wants a copy of that, I'd be happy to give it to you right now, but a spreadsheet of all of the properties that we're dealing with. So whenever we started having some discussions, yeah, do you need?
Yeah.
Any boss? Yep, you've got one there.
I do. Any boss need one?
I've got it.
I think we're okay for now.
I've got it.
So when we started getting into the specifics here, getting into the weed of these, this discussion, it was kind of nearing holiday season, and we decided to postpone that discussion until now. So now we're trying to, to get that, gain traction again. There's two things that are happening on the other end here with our partners in Cozen and Connors, public strategists. They're looking for money for us, and there's some grant opportunities. They're saying it's available to potentially to pay for these walls. But the, the crux of the matter is that we can't necessarily use public funding, which is federal funding in these cases, for private properties. So the borough would have to look into some type of ownership of these things, whether it be a fee simple title or right-of-way, those kind of things. So we really need to re-engage that conversation with the borough solicitor, including ours. Of course, we know that, and the reason why Mike opened tonight's meeting with an announcement about that meeting with the Borough Council is that ultimately, it would be the borough that would own these walls or have the right-of-way to these walls, not the Stormwater Authority. The authority's more of a funding mechanism than it is an owner. So you have these, this list of walls, it's broken into three categories. I broke them into the wall, these are just my recommendations, by the way. Recommendations of the ones that we should own, the ones that we should not own, and there's a bunch of questionable ones. And to get into the specifics, to start really finding out if we should or shouldn't, we need to start pulling deeds. And I think that's one of the solicitor's concerns, is whenever you start getting into the weeds here, you start generating some time, which costs money. So before we move any further, we want to make sure that the Stormwater Authority, the Borough Council, everybody's on the same page, so we can start generating the time into looking into these specific items. And the last thing that I'll say before I open it for discussion is, there, we do have a prioritization list. So we know which, specifically which walls, we don't want to really get into identifying walls in a public meeting yet. We want to still have some more discussions until I get into the weeds with it, but I have identified some of the walls. The one that I will, can say today is Bream Alley is one of them. We're moving forward with that this summer. But there's other walls like that, which in sections, I mean, this isn't anything that we're, that we're trying to hide here, but there are sections that have fallen in, in the recent history, within the past 10 years. And we have more sections just like that that we're concerned about. So we do have, like I said, a priority list, the ones that we would like to address first, should we be able to get public funding for these things, and then obviously catch up with other ones later. So that's kind of a recap of where we stand on everything. I'll open it there to you guys for some, some questions or discussion.
Thanks, Chad. I mean, like you said, we're not going to discuss certain properties here this evening because there's a lot of work that needs to be done until we get to that level. And it is going to require a fair amount of legal work as we proceed, but at the end of the day, I think what you said at the beginning of your comments was absolutely right. The Stormwater Authority does not own anything. The borough does.
Or do you want to?
Nor do we ever want to. No, that's not our job. This would have to be a borough-owned situation, and there's a lot of detail. So, any questions, please?
Yeah, I have two, actually. One is just about the, the presentation. Will the Borough Council see this before February 24th, or are we going to show it on the 24th?
That's really up to the council and the manager. I mean, I don't have any objections to sharing this. I mean, it's, I've already distributed it electronically, so, I mean.
Let me better inform.
Yeah.
Discussion on the 24th, if they see it ahead of time.
We can put it in council folder for them to review if you want to do that.
If I'm not mistaken, I think they did see a presentation before, Chad, didn't they see this presentation?
So they don't, they didn't see the exact one that Deborah has pulled up.
Okay.
But they've seen a very similar one.
Okay.
The last one was just a little bit higher level. It just keeps getting a little bit more detailed. The same presentation is getting, you know, boiled down to the specifics.
Well, let's, let's, you know, deal with that suggestion, Kurt. I mean, I think it's a good idea. If I sat on the Borough Council, I certainly want to have as much information.
Should save some time and have better discussion for the 24th.
So when Charles gets back, tell him right now, we're, we're looking at sending this to the Borough Council, maybe a week before we have our special meeting.
Yep, I'll double-check with him.
The photos were very helpful, actually.
Yeah, yeah. But you're right, they have seen something like this before, but not to this degree of detail.
And I had one other question, then, too.
Go ahead. Then it's Pat's turn.
I just, just curious, the green, red, and yellow spreadsheet you put together, has anyone cross-referenced that to see if anybody on that sheet is on our lean list? Do any of those property owners owe us money for not paying?
I have not.
I have no idea.
I have not done that officially, but as I look at it, I don't, none are jumping out.
Okay.
I can't say that definitively, but after a while.
It might be two.
Yeah.
I'll, I can double-check.
Okay. I'm just curious, which adds another layer of complexity.
There's none here that are frequent flyers.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know.
If they're in the red section, it doesn't matter.
Good point.
All right. Okay. Pat?
Thank you.
Okay, under should own, does that imply we don't own it now? In other words, is it clear that the property owner owns it?
Heck, yeah. I don't know if I'm ready to paint with that broad of a brush yet. So some of them, let me see, Pat, since you have it, there are some that are called... Oh, it's not jumping out to me here. There's, there's some that the parcel ID is Aqua, and it's Adams Aqua. And some of those sections, there might already be some type of a municipal ownership that is clearly not on a private deed.
Right.
Those are in that should own category.
And I will tell you, this is where the devil's in the details. In a review of Borough Minutes that I've done, there were supposed to be, or there were understandings with certain property owners at certain times when walls were built right next, right on their properties, that the borough would take care of any future problem with those walls. Now, whether it made it to the deeds is another story, but that's why the devil's in the details with all of these things, because there could be things that are out there that we don't know.
Pat, I...
Some of the deeds did mention the property boundaries to Stevens Run, so I don't know if that meant to the center line of the stream. I did pull two of those. I sent them to you a while back.
Yes, some are very specific to the center line of the stream, others aren't.
Perfect, right.
So.
I'm sorry, I hid it from us in plain sight here. I made a column, the far right column is the Adams Aqua. So if you take a look at that, Pat, you can see that the items that I noted as yes have that ADM Aqua. So that, to me, would suggest some type of, it's not a private ownership there, and I doubt that that is a private ownership. So again, we'd have to start chasing back, see how that property, that lot was created, who created it.
Right.
Who was intended to be the owner of that property.
And were there any agreements with those owners between the borough of Gettysburg and, and that property owner at that time or in perpetuity? I don't know.
There is a whole body of law associated with water, you know, water law. And I know that when you have lakefront property at Lake Heritage or Lake Mead, you know, sometimes those property descriptions say to the water's edge, you know? It's...
Means it'll have boos.
That's right.
Depending on the time of year, it sure does. You know, it's a very interesting area of law. I would suspect that if this is something that is going to be seriously undertaken by the borough, that probably the vast majorities are going to need surveyed, or have, are going to need to reference some survey that was done semi-recently. In part, so that if you're getting an easement, you know exactly where you're getting your easement on. So.
Okay.
Well, contrary to popular belief, the Tiber does and has moved.
Sure.
Yeah.
Certain places you go, the curve is deeper just because of erosion than what it was 10, 15, 20 years ago.
Yep.
Because a prime example is on Fourth Street, where the stream for a while didn't line up with the bridge anymore.
Hmm.
Everything on the north wall was rotted out. The stream wanted to come around this way.
Okay, Pat?
Okay, so Adam Aqua, we know, doesn't sound like we know who they are.
Well, and I would not put tremendous stock in, and I'm not faulting the County GIS Division, but they just take that from the most recent deed. I mean, if, there's nothing underpinning that necessarily, other than the most recent legal description that they're protracting, that whatever lines are shown on that map are not gospel. I'll put it that way.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and that should be a disclaimer, that this list was created directly from the Adams County parcel mapping, which isn't a detailed review of deeds.
They go by whatever the last description said.
When you click on it, you click on, I agree to that disclaimer.
What I'm trying to get to here, be more direct, is required for Adam Aqua, but who says they, we don't even know who they are, how do we know that they require it?
They require what?
Survey. There's at least six or seven of them here that says, "Survey required for Adam Aqua."
Yeah, I think, I think survey is a generic word of, we need to review the deeds, we need to potentially survey the property boundaries, find out exactly where this thing is. That can be true for every single one of these.
I think that Aqua thing was a name given, this is my opinion, no legal opinion, counselor, to properties that fall into a certain category. How that category came about or what it means, I don't know, but for the county people, it's a placeholder.
Yeah. My suspicion would be where that's showing up is because somebody's property line started at a definitive point in the street or in the sidewalk and went back 100 feet, and then it stopped. And on the other side, it was the same way, and it's no man's land, in their eyes. So they're not assessing it on anybody's particular property for tax purposes. So they're saying, well, that's, that's the stream bed that is maybe not owned by anybody, is my guess.
Okay. So does it sound like Adam Aqua was the county, then?
Well, that's just what the county's giving it.
That's my placeholder name. I think that's what it is.
You came up with it.
I never heard it.
Trying to find out what it is.
I don't know.
If you click on the county parcel mapping, that's what it says.
They're going to send us over to the councils.
I'll put it this way.
You should know.
If you go on the County GIS and you click on Lake Heritage, the body of water, it will come up that same way.
Okay.
If you click on Lake Mead, it would come up the same way.
So if we ask somebody in county mapping, we might get the definitive answer.
If I signed a deed to myself, selling myself your house, Pat, it would say that I owned your house on county mapping. They go by whatever the most recent deed is, is my understanding.
Yeah.
Whether it's right, wrong, semi-right, semi-right.
So it's on the deed, then?
Or, well, it, it would not be on the deed in the sense that, nobody's deed would say that area over there is Aqua. I suspect it's there because it's no man's land, so to speak, and they just gave it that placeholder designation.
Am I the only one that thinks we need to clear this up before we have this meeting?
I don't know that there's a way to clear it up before the meeting.
I think that's going to, that's a monumental task that's going to cause more research. I think...
I'm not trying to get a definitive thing, not just, you know, just so we know who Adam Aqua is.
Or what the term means generically?
Have a more meaningful discussion. Yeah, if that's, if that's what it is, that's what it is, but I don't hear anybody saying that's what it is.
Well, Adam, can you ask them what their definition of Adams Aqua is? And we can be prepared to tell the borough what the county told us, even though it may be, I don't mean to double-speak, but I don't know what it is. It's a term.
The best thing I can say, Pat, is I would not spend a whole lot of mental energy concerning ourselves of what that means, because, let me put it this way. If there's two places that have overlapping legal descriptions, which happens tremendously often, County GIS is going to take it by whatever the most recent deed says, whether it's correct or not. So if there's overlap there, they have, somebody has to pay the taxes on it. And I suspect what happened here with these Aqua ones is that both deeds, most recently, stopped at a certain point and did not meet, and it happened to be that there's a stream there. And accordingly, the county is not assessing it at any particular property, whether or not it's in the chain of title. In their opinion, that's just the stream bed.
Yeah, a lot of these do have definitive descriptions, other side of the channel, middle of the channel. Just big open to me.
And that's why I suspect all of them are going to need surveyed.
Hmm.
Because the county's opinion is an opinion. I mean, a survey is an opinion as well, but, but they're out there in the field. They're not, they're not just protracting it based on words on paper.
So I'm thinking about this meeting with the council, so we should own it, so that means we're going to pay money for it?
Right away to it.
Well...
Hopefully not.
And there, and there again, that's going to be the discussion for the meeting. I have my pretty strong opinion on whether ownership should be on the table or not.
Okay.
Which I'm not going to get into now. But your choices, I think fundamentally, are going to come down to ownership or ability to access via an easement, via some sort of right-of-way.
Well, we talked about, let me start out by saying we need to define ownership to get grants. So it seems to me like we should have some way of definitively lining out who the owner is. And then what our position is, should we buy it or not? I think not, but that should be up for discussion. And then the third thing would be liability. If we accept ownership of it, does that mean we're guaranteeing it's going to stay there during a flood, if it goes down and then damages their house because now you don't have a wall there and 20 feet of it, just like happened in North Carolina? Are we responsible for damaging our house?
Well, I think these are questions that the Borough Council has to hear, because they're the ones who will ultimately own them.
Okay.
All right? And I think this is, I think those are good questions for when we meet with the borough to say, here, here are some of the things that are running through our brain about this, because we can suggest certain things, but at the end of the day, their, their legal counsel is going to have to say, this may, you know, whatever makes more sense for the borough, whatever that is.
Can I say, can I say a couple things? So, so one thing, some of the grant sources to pay for these things do pay for property acquisitions as well, and the process of property acquisitions. So one of the questions that we're going to bring to the council's attention when we meet with them is say, okay, what is the next step? We got to start identifying ownership. And whenever you say identify, that means who owns it, not necessarily that we should or shouldn't, but who owns it first? That is going to take homework. It's going to take somebody pulling the deeds, it's going to take somebody surveying it. That's cost money. So we need direction on who is going to take that next step and start getting some ideas of how much money that's going to cost. Is that the borough solicitor? Is that Stormwater Authority solicitor? Is that engineering? Who is that? Second thing is, that I wanted to say is, don't, I'm an engineer, right? Surveying, engineering, I'm using the word own, and I probably shouldn't have, so if you can give me a suggestion on a different word to use, I can change the spreadsheet. I'm, I'm trying to, to make it pretty, because we, we started off with this big, grandiose discussion, and I said, really, the devil's in the detail. We need to know exactly what properties we're talking about. How many are there? So now we know. We know exactly how many properties. We got them kind of into some bite-sized pieces with some categories. I assigned the word own. I probably should have put in there own, or right-of-way, or acquisition. I should have made a really long title, but I try to boil it down to one word. So maybe I can use a different word, maybe, like, like...
The words are fine, I just try to understand what those mean, and it, I'm not getting clarity on that.
Yeah, and somewhat like, that first category, I think, is, you know, again, whenever I say already own, one of the, one of the ones there is Bream Alley, the fourth one, the third one down. That's clearly in the borough's right-of-way. And Bream Alley's fee simple title, it's not even really a right-of-way. The, the, the third, second one down is one that the Borough Council just recently obtained a right-of-way across Heather Hazel's property to do with Bream Alley. So that one, in that case, is an easement over Heather's property. So we don't technically own the property there, we just have an easement to be able to access it. So again, I'm painting with a broad brush with the word own, and I really shouldn't have. I should have said like own, or easement, or access, or something like that. So I'll try to get a better word there, a more generic type of a thing.
Okay. So the other question in my mind now would be, should we try to sort this stuff out? Are we just going to go to this meeting in February and dump it out there and see what they think?
Well, I think you need to, you as the authority, should have some sense, either through discussions at this meeting, or kind of thinking amongst yourselves internally, within your own brain, not, not talking outside of a public meeting, to be clear. You know, what your expectations are for this project, if this project is to be undertaken, what, what your expectations are as an authority. You, right now, do not own anything, and when I say own, I mean fee simple, and you also do not have rights, and by that I mean right-of-way easement, et cetera, to anything.
Right.
Do you want the authority to have either of those changed? Are you in a position to do that? Or is the borough the more logical vehicle to do those things? You know, in light of their resources, their budget, your mission, their mission, you know, these are things to think about.
Well, let's, do you have more?
No.
You want to roll? I, I think, you know, based on who we are at this point, and given the borough's position, I would say that the borough is ultimately going to be the owner. And, correct me, you know, everybody, just jump in here, I'm just talking. The borough ultimately will apply for grants along with us. They, they will be behind us if we apply, or they will, they will have to answer the question of what kind of relationship there is between the borough and this tributary with walls, which we want to correct. How about that for general? And, and, and that's it. I mean, we don't want to own these walls, the Stormwater Authority, these have always been borough walls, the borough has worked on these walls, there's a history of this, and we have a dilemma because some of these walls are failing.
My anticipation would be, and I don't want to speak for you folks, but my anticipation would be that the result of that meeting, or going into that meeting, that you're going to say, we as the Stormwater Authority are suggesting that this should be a borough project, you know, with the understanding that perhaps you're going to finance it via the, you know, via your stormwater fee over time. But that at the end of the day, you clearly own nothing now. You, you own nothing and you have the rights to nothing now because you haven't existed that long, and nobody's ever granted that to you.
Right.
The borough may. So it seems that if this is going to happen, this would probably be a borough endeavor, financed in whole or in part, perhaps, by you folks.
Correct.
And, and maybe steered by you folks, but at the end of the day, you're not holding the bag.
Right.
Is my guess, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
And, and based on the conversations that we've had with the borough in public meetings before, there's no indication, as far as I know, that anybody on the Borough Council thinks it's a good idea that we, all of a sudden, being the Stormwater Authority, become the owners here. I think...
I think that's correct, yeah. I think that's an accurate assumption, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think the Borough Council, not speaking for the Borough Council, but my sense is that they realize that they're on the hook here, that we're an arm of them to try and guide them, to help them, by this very information. And it, as imperfect as it is, it's better than anything else that we've seen in a long time, and now it's, it's time for us to sharpen the pencil and get with them about, from a legal perspective first, of how to approach this. So we are putting it on their agenda.
Yeah, I mean, working for the borough for 30 years, and 29 of those with this subject in my purview, it's a different world now than it was then. in my purview, it's a different world now than it was then. People used to be glad to see the borough show up and try to clean out the Tiber and everything else. Now the properties aren't Getafe Burgeons that have lived there for 20, 40, 50 years, now they're owned by corporations, now they're owned by people who just have a rental property and don't want to be bothered, they don't want to fix it, they don't want any parts of it. But by God, they don't want you driving your backhoe across it either. So, I mean, the walls are part of the issue, but the other part of the issue that I see, which is why the borough needs to have the right of ways and the ownership to this, is just regular maintenance for the highway department. Because there's a lot of these, a couple of years ago, I argued there was a space on Water Street that the borough owned, it was across the street from an alley. Because that alley was deeded to the Tiber. Property owner wanted that piece, and the borough sold it to them. Way against my arguments, because none of them ever had to get in the Tiber in that section. So they gave it up, and guess what they did? They said, don't you come in here as your backhoe anymore. That's our property now. And, I mean, that may seem like a miniscule thing, but it's not. You need to have places where you can get into the Tiber. And I mean, GMA has a little bit of skin in this game, not necessarily as far as ownership is, but when you talk about working in it, they need access. Because they've got a lot of sewer pipes.
Right.
And they've got water pipes to go across the Tiber.
Sure they do.
And there's places where, you know, from Carlisle Street to Stratton Street, you can't get in anymore except for one spot. So when you get in that spot, you can only go so far this way and so far this way, and then about two feet off the bottom are sewer lines. So you're done. So further you can go.
Can't get across them.
And I mean, when we have, not necessarily big floods, but I was here for the flood of 96, and you want to talk about problems? There were a lot of problems. When you start taking crap out from under the Tiber because of pipe, by wheelbarrow loads, yeah, nobody wants to do that. We had some very ingenious people that worked for us, good old Roth Carey was one of them. If you go down Bream Alley, where we're about to do this work, and you look at the pipe along there, you'll see that pipe has unions in it. Nobody ever knew why, nobody ever asked me why. That was so we could dump our, get our backhoe down in there, because everything came under Federal Point End, had to be brought somewhere by wheelbarrow loads. And after you got to that point, you had to get it up. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that people don't understand about the Tiber, but trust me when I say, easements and ownership have to belong to the borough. We have no equipment.
Right.
We're never going to have equipment. We shouldn't have equipment.
Amen.
So I don't even think that's a discussion. It may be part of the discussion, and unfortunately, I tried my best, but I won't be out of town, I won't be able to make that meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry to say, because I love arguing some of these points with people who don't know what they think they know. But yeah, ownership and right of way has got to be the boroughs.
And if you wanted, you could certainly write something up to share, you know, that could be shared with the borough council at that meeting.
I could, I wanted to walk all this.
That would be of value.
Right.
And I didn't get that done, but I can tell you, looking at these and what I know just from memory, I think Chad's done a great job as to what we should own, what we should not own.
Right.
And questionable, I would have to say, until I walk them anyhow, I think that's a good category for them. But the ones in red, oh yeah, we don't want any parts of them. And I don't think the borough does either.
Right. Pat?
Yeah, I, I think it's good for us not to do anything, but it sounds like you already have precedent where you have an easement for the one property to do the work you're doing now.
Yeah, associated with Bream.
So the.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a precedent for, for all of them, it's very specific to that Bream Alley thing.
I understand, it's kind of precedent because you did it. It must be a viable, viable way to do it.
Yeah, specific to a, a traveling right of way. So, specific to that scenario. I, I don't want to, I don't want to just suggest that.
Landowner owns it, and we needed some basis for going in there, doing work on it.
Yes, yep.
To do that, you got an easement.
That was a viable option, yes.
That's, that sounds to me like it should be viable for the rest of them.
Well, it, it could be for my, it could be, you know, for those that don't.
So the question, you know, that's, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to do this. But the easement, you know, if that's good enough to get grants, is, that's question one. Can we go get grants just based on an easement without owning a property, in other words you have legal.
Chad's saying yes.
Well, yeah, and I guess it depends on which grant source, because there, because like I just said, there are some grant sources that will pay for you literally to acquire it and pursue ac, and pursue acquisition.
But isn't, but isn't part of the, some of those grants, weren't they saying that we had to own the wall?
Some of them were saying that they won't even pay for the, the design process, they weren't shovel ready, and you got to have clear title.
Right, so.
They use that word, clear title, so that could be right of way, or ownership, or something like that.
Right, so we need easement for all of them, but places where the wall is really bad, we have to figure out how we're going to own that wall.
Right. Yeah, and, and one of the things I'm going to be presenting to the council tonight is, I'm, I'm working with Harry Eastman on a certificate of title for the C2P2 grant that we need to do on North Washington Street to be able to use that grant money. Same thing, there's got to be a certification, certification of title. So each grant tour may have a different interpretation, of course, I'm not going to play attorney, so, of what that, exactly that means.
I mean, I think a property owner who has a wall and doesn't want to give it to the borough is an idiot. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
Right. Well, it seems to me like we ought to proceed with getting easements for these properties, rather than outright entering, putting the conditions in the easements that the borough is accepting no liability, just in case we get a western North Carolina kind of flood in here and that wall fails, and their house falls in the creek.
Well, keep that, keep those notes, because.
You see how organized.
I know, I, I like them. Will you be able to make the meeting with the borough?
Probably on the 24th, we should be able to do that.
Okay, because these are the.
When they're in agreement, as opposed to we're looking at each other.
Well, no, because at the end of the day, they have to, this is a discussion, the serious, I look at this as a serious discussion with the borough. We're not going to come out with any, any ironclad decisions here, Pat. This is the, the first real shot over the, serious shot over the bow. We told them this before.
Yeah.
Yep, now, we have a list of things, and they have to respond to us, because ultimately, they're going to, I mean, we may help a little bit with the bill, but they're paying, with your bill, but they're going to be up to their necks with the legal stuff.
Mike, how, how do you envision that meeting going? Are, are you going to lead it? Are we going to do it jointly with Council President Moon?
We're going to have a sidebar this week to talk about this.
Yeah, it would seem like an agenda, so we have some structure.
We're not, we're, thought we had a meeting last week, that didn't work. We're going to have a, a prep meeting this week, and we're going to discuss it. Chad will be there, Harry will be there, you can't be there, I'll be there.
Okay.
And we'll talk about this.
So the head, like, Charles gave Chad, Harry and Mike, when he says we are having a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Going to talk about what, what it'll look like and how it'll run.
Right. And, and how we want to kick it off, what we want to do, so forth, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that'll happen Thursday, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Can I get this down in a minute, so my minutes aren't? Yeah, what I'm suggesting is that we get, if it's feasible, I don't know yet, that the borough get an easement with the property owners to allow us to go in there and do the wall and channel.
Restoration or?
Restoration, yeah, it's called restoration. And the easement should have limited liability or whole harmless to borough in case of failure of that restoration.
I think that's a reasonable suggestion, and we'll let the legal folks then start pushing back on, on all of this that we suggest.
Yeah.
Okay, Chad, you have one more?
Yeah, and I, and I like painting with the broad bar, I'm using that metaphor a lot tonight, the broad brush of, of restoration, but just to help understand that a little bit, is all of these walls have different recommendations of what we would do there. To John's point, some of it is just cleaning it out. We need to identify that we have a right of way, so we can get in there and, and clean it out. And I was kind of smiling because Mike and I had this conversation a lot of times on how many of these things are permitted. There's, these are obstructions and, and encroachment in a right of way. Some of them are permitted, and we have the rights to go in there and clean it out without an additional permit, some of them aren't, and we don't really know if they're permitted or not. So it's going to be diving into that next level, if, if these obstructions, these encroachments into the waterway are permitted or not. So, so some of it's just nothing more than, than cleaning. Some of it is repointing of walls, putting a, a, a new footing in, just doing some simple maintenance. Some of it is complete replacement.
Right.
Where you, you need to tear it down and start over from scratch. So whenever you say restoration, you know, I mean, I mean, that could mean a lot of different things, just want to make sure that that's clear.
The permit, it is Fish and Boat Commission permits?
Uh, some of them are general, and where it's just DEP, some of them are the joint permits, where they have both. They have the Fish and, they have the, well, they have DEP and Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay. Okay, good, good conversation, thank you. Keep those ideas coming for our meeting on the 24th. Any other questions? If not, we will turn to financial updates. Revenue and expenses, I'm going to do that for Deb. I took a look at what Charles presented to us, and I found it to be in order. You all have to remember that our revenues are only budgeted for half a year. So when you look at, although the math wasn't done, when you look at it, we have a negative 296,000, but that's not a particular problem because we have, in Pliggett, we have 584,000, we have $77,000 in our checking account, so we have $661,000 available to us. The, and the deficit will be cured when we send out new bills coming up.
July 1st.
July 1st. So, we're, we're really in good shape at this point. Any questions?
I have one to close in.
Yep.
Is there a letter to go out with those bills describing that process? Is that when that, is that when it's going to go out?
It will go out in the newsletter and with the bills.
Right. Okay. Deborah, you want to talk about payments received?
Sure. We started out with 241 non-payments. When we sent out our reminders and 30-day notice, we've reduced the 241 down to 61, and that's roughly around $10,000 that haven't been paid. I have checks filtering in, so they usually come in at about $100, $110, so it's not moving a lot, but we are down to 61 non-payments. I've sent a list to Adam's group, and we're going to kind of work through those, give a, just a couple extra days for the mail to filter through, and they're going to start processing and researching to write up the liens at that point.
So we'll get a report, we're not going to meet next month, but the, the April, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get a report in April, thank you. Adam, any other comments about that?
Yeah, just to kind of pick up where Deborah left off. We got the list this morning.
Yes.
Of the ones that are still out. There's always a few.
Right.
There's always a few that we do not file, well, we always, I'll back up. Today is 30 days from when the certified letter went out. So the authority is able to file a lien now against all the ones that are unpaid. We always wait a little longer, because you don't want to file a lien unless you have to file a lien. And they, they will continue to trickle in, in all likelihood, over the next couple of days. So what we're doing now is going through and verifying that none of these people are deceased. None of these people have sold the property in the last year. I know of one that sold in a settlement company, just forgot to get a payoff. You know, someone got a bill, then they sold the property, so we coordinate with those outfits. We make sure that people's names are spelled right, that husbands and wives are both on them, that sort of thing is what we're doing now. And I would anticipate probably Tuesday or Wednesday next week is when we'll be filing them. Just to give a couple more days, give us time to kind of cross-reference everything, and then we'll file them. And if past is prologue, when they're filed, within two or three weeks, half of the liens that are filed will get paid.
Right.
But that's, for whatever reason, the wake-up call.
It's inexpensive, I forgot, yeah, yeah.
And then the others will sit, and will slowly get paid over time as people sell, sheriff, refinance, what have you. And in the meantime, they do accrue interest, but they don't do that until they're filed, which is why we file liens, so that they're on record and that the authority has lien priority, plus 6% interest.
Right.
I assume that we have some that have never paid?
There is one who has never paid.
Yeah, there's.
I don't know if there's.
Yeah.
That has, hasn't paid since 2019, yes.
From the beginning.
Right.
There are a couple that haven't paid for multiple years, but there's only one that has never paid. I was wondering if you guys wanted to do something with that.
I would talk about that after we get these latest round filed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, maybe they will come to their senses and pay, hopefully. Any other questions about liens, anyone? Okay. Toxic chemical drop-off.
Yes. I've been, the last conference that Karen and I went to for recycling had some contacts there for a chemical kind of sweep-in and cleanup, so I gave you guys a list of all the materials they pick up. There is a minimum they require to come out, they're all DEP and permitted to handle and dispose of all of the materials that are on this list. They have a minimum, they said, well, I tried to get a, a price breakdown, and they said if we have approximately 200 people come, and, you know, it's kind of a average amount of things, that it would cost anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 for that day pickup, you know, bearing that somebody doesn't bring 50 pounds of something in, and not just like three or four paint cans or something. So there's a few of the items on here that has a price minimum and some that don't. So my recommendation would be to use some of the items that don't have a price minimum, like paint, pesticide liquid, antifreeze, aerosols, things like that, so there's not a, a minimum if somebody brings in two aerosol cans, or, I'm sorry, like mercury devices, we still have to pay $350 only if one comes in. But if we use one of the other items, which a lot of people are noting that they have paint issues, so paints and liquid chemicals, pesticides, fertilizers, things like that, and they can do multiple items at the one drop-off.
Right.
So they'll bring the drums containers, we could supply the 30-yard dumpster, and they would supply all the, the labor to touch and move the chemicals.
Right, now, let me, let me preface everything by saying, this is an idea that probably whose time has come. As far as clean water and stormwater is concerned, it's much better for us to collect this stuff than for people to throw it down the stormwater. So, at some point, we will talk about money, and I've told Deborah that, and of course, it has to be approved by the board, that the Stormwater Authority would have some interest in paying a portion of whatever the costs are. At the same time, we had a sidebar discussion about, there may be other entities in the county who might have an interest in joining us with this, and whatever we decide to do, the list, this is a pretty exhaustive list, we wouldn't be trying to collect all these things, but you mentioned paint, that's something that everybody has, and some other things, and maybe we would start small and find out if there is a need in the borough, which we think there is. And, and then talk about, okay, if somebody paid $10 with that, or $20, depending on what they brought in, and basically the borough and the stormwater, or, I can't speak for the borough, the Stormwater Authority would help pay the rest. So, we're at the beginning of this process, nothing we have to decide today, but we just want to make everybody aware, and Deborah will continue to work and do research on what else is out there, and how maybe other counties are doing this. and how maybe other counties are doing this, or other, I'm picking a county. Boroughs are doing this in other places that may give us an idea of how to do it and maybe even do it more economically.
And it is part of the MS4, MCMs for Public Outreach and Education.
Right.
And would satisfy a lot of other requirements that we have to do yearly. So it would be a nice thing, you know, with the rain barrels. We're also going to do a composting bin. I did get grant funding, or working on getting grant funding to do another public outreach and education on composting and taking those chemicals in, and, not chemicals, but you know, food waste is also a problem for illicit discharge as well. So that'll kind of help out, and it would be a free class, so it would be advertised in our spring newsletter. And at that time, I will take reservations.
So that sounds like something that would happen before.
Yes.
The chemicals, right.
This, I don't know if we can get grant funding for this or not. But I'm looking into it, but I talked to the gentleman who runs the company and he said he doesn't believe that it would qualify for what we're doing.
Maybe we should ask our state representatives at first.
So I'm still working on that, but I know that there is a need. Finally, I got a price sheet, the items that they do collect, they can do multiple items.
Maybe we should ask the Sherman Williams people if they have, if they give grants.
They might, or maybe they could donate some money to help with the program.
Yeah, because it's going to be a lot of their paints and so forth.
It might be something that South Mountain Partnership would.
Yep, I can talk to them too.
They can give you up to 5,000.
Okay.
Good, good. Any questions?
It's a good idea.
I agree, I agree. Okay, old business, Robert Harbaugh, give us an update.
Okay, I believe last month you were updated on that the boring for the stormwater was completed, but the water was not. Now the update is the, all the borings have been done underneath the railroad tracks. The pits have been backfilled, but they were not able to be temporary paved yet.
Right.
The north, they did the north side today, they were doing temporary paving on the north pit. And then on down the street towards the, with the trenches, some of the trenches that are having issues with. They were working on that today. But the weather, the past month, the weather has just been throwing fits and obstructions. And so they did do some temporary paving on the north side today. The south side pit will not be done until after this next storm coming up. They actually got a decent day to do some temporary paving. But some of the issue on the south side is the waterline services that need to be hooked up to the new waterline. Rock, 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 rock. They're having lots of issues with rock trying to get the new services in. And it's really slowing them up, so.
Which service, which services, Rob?
The water, the new waterline services to the college department.
The train station, college?
Yeah, the college apartments, the ice house apartments. The south side is, they're hitting a lot of rock. And it's really throwing things up, and the weather obstruction doesn't help any either. But they are moving forward slowly. And as they're installing the water services, they're also installing the south side of the storm drain. So they are making progress. Most likely, Chad can fill in here too, most likely they'll be into the middle of March probably till they're completed. But hopefully, the end of this week, beginning of next, that the intersection of River Street and North Washington Street will be open. I don't know, did you get any other updates on that?
So I did talk to the project manager again this afternoon after Robbie and I spoke this morning, and he basically just confirmed that he highly doubts that the street would be open at the end of this week. It'll probably be into next week that the street will remain closed. And then at that point, it would just go to day-to-day closures in the March, like Robbie said.
And part of the old system is abandoned on the north side that they could, but the south side's not. They had to do some temporary tie-ins to the new service, the new line.
Any questions? I have a couple, but anybody?
Basically, they're on schedule.
Yeah, I would say by the time we have our next meeting, which is in two months from now, this pro, the Stormwater Authority component of this will be done. And that'll be, just, it's actually working out pretty good because we had to rebid the CDBG, the curb and sidewalk replacement component. So we just opened up bids this morning on that. And we'll be awarding hopefully at the council meeting, the same council meeting that we're going to have this other workshop, the workshop meeting in two weeks from now. And then we're hoping to have that contractor under contract and get them started near the end of March, beginning of May, to start putting everything back. All of the sidewalks, all the paving, that kind of thing. So like Robbie said, early, early to mid-March, we should be finishing up the stormwater and the water component.
But that was our estimate.
Yeah, 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 it's a little, well, the original estimate had us done by now. But the updated estimate that you're talking about has, is right, is right on target.
I think you're right, yeah.
Couple of questions. The grates that are in the street, will they remain? There are new grates towards the middle of the street, storm.
They will remain till the curbing portion is done because those grates will actually become C-tops. Those are just temporary M-tops.
Okay.
So we can pile over them. But once the new curbing is installed, they will become C-tops. Which is incorporated, the C-top is incorporated into the curb.
Okay.
So they, the boxes will remain, but the grates, the top grates will not, they'll change.
Okay. And what is the paving schedule? May, April, May? I'm just thinking of the college schedule.
So there's a, there's a third, there's actually three different phases of this project. The second phase, I just said, the CDBG component will start in end of March, probably April. That's about a two- to three-month contract. And then the third part of this is the C2P2 DCNR component, which finishes up with the rest of the curbs and does the paving. That's going to be probably July. Very, very latest, you know, the worst-case scenario would go into August is what we're looking at. But we want to be 100% done and out of there before the kids come back to college in August.
Wow. And I guess the sidewalk work is what you just opened? The bids you just opened in front of the brick townhouses?
Yeah, yeah, so sidewalks that we just opened this morning for the CDBG funding is south of the railroad tracks that Robbie was just describing, right in front where the college owns all of those buildings.
Or did, or whatever.
Yep. And then the next one, the C2P2, is for the sidewalks north of the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's kind of how that's broken down.
And those bids have not come in yet?
No, we have not put that out to bid, we won't be putting that out to bid for probably another month yet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And there is one other component to this project that is stormwater-related, and that's those tree boxes. So keep that in mind too, that when we go through, your main role, the Stormwater Authority's, was to help fund the pipe replacement.
Right.
So no Stormwater Authority money is getting put towards the tree boxes, but there is a Stormwater component to the tree boxes. It's kind of an MS4 type of a thing. It helped us to get, secure the funding, the C2P2 funding. So those will get installed while we replace these sidewalks.
Okay, tree boxes. But we're not paying for them.
Right, C2P2 and CDBG is paying for those.
Good, okay. Any other comments or questions or anything from, okay. Thank you. Chad, could you update on implementing a project application form for projects between 800 and 5,000 square feet?
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't have a lot for you tonight. We did initiate that process, my admin's working on that, I've been having some discussions with Deborah. But the goal is there, it's just, it's not a rates, rules, and regulations thing. It's associated with your Stormwater Ordinance for having an application process for those full-blown stormwater plans. We have kind of an application for the simple ones, we just don't have a great application process. It's kind of been a pet peeve of mine with all Stormwater ordinances that I've been dealing with for 20 years now. So we're going to have that satisfied here in the near future. So we initiated the process, it's just we would just like to get it implemented soon. It's just an administrative process, it doesn't change the ordinance, it doesn't change any of the law. It's just how we administer the plans as they come through.
Can we expect to maybe see that in April?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. There's no urgency, but I'm glad we're working on it, keeping it going. Okay, anything else? If not, let me repeat, we have in our new business section, a special meeting of the GBSWA with Borough Council. Let me read it. A motion to set a joint special meeting of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority, GWSWA, Board of Directors in the Gettysburg Borough Council, to be conducted on Monday, February 24th, 2025, commencing at 6:30 PM for the purpose of receiving information and discussing matters relative to the maintenance, repair, replacement, construction, and reconstruction of the channel walls of Stevens Run within the borough of Gettysburg. Would someone like to, it says motion, so would someone like to make them? Thank you, John. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Kurt, all in favor, any comment? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition, not hearing or seeing any? It passes, thank you very much. And just for the record, and I'm one of the people who always says this, Stevens Run is also known as the Tiber, so.
Or Gettys Run.
What's that?
Or Gettys, right?
Or, or technically, the first name was Gettys Run. And we have that in the borough minutes from 1800 and something. So Gettys Run to Stevens to the Tiber, and back to Stevens, of course. Because that's how it's known in the, in the public record. So thank you. Public comment, not seeing any. Mr. Moon, anybody? He refrains.
He defers.
Give you guys a piece of my mind!
You wouldn't be the first. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Thank you, second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the council of the borough of Gettysburg for February 10th, 2025. Would you all please rise and join me in a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag? Thank you, everyone. An executive session was conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of its monthly general business meeting held on January 13th, 2025, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708, 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately prior to the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment and the terms and conditions of employment of a current, of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. Further, a joint work session of the Gettysburg Borough Council and the Board of Directors of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority will be held on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Gettysburg Municipal Building for the purpose of receiving information regarding the Stevens Run wall channels and to begin to discuss, to begin discussions on how to repair and maintain the channel walls. At this point, I would hear a motion to approve the February 10, 2025 agenda as presented. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Borough Council meeting of January 13th, 2025, and the Borough Council work session held on January 27th, 2025 as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, corrections, omissions, or errors? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This brings us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is reserved for items appearing on tonight's agenda. We ask that the public use the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, list your name and your address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? All right, seeing none? We will move on to current and old business, and we will start tonight in the Planning Department with Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of the report was provided electronically. The, I guess, big news is that we're hopeful to have the rezoning, the zoning ordinance draft from the Planning Commission completed later this month. We anticipate a workshop session in March to discuss this with the council. In terms of, I guess, anything, additional items, the, let's see, the Planning Commission's annual report, it will be approved at the next meeting for the Planning Commission. So that'll be discussed at the February workshop with council. Other than that, I'm bill for questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right, thank you, sir. Deb, the historic environmental preservation?
Yes, thank you. We have a e-cycle, I'm sorry, the paper shred is scheduled for May 17th. You can sign up on our website at GettysburgPA.gov. We are looking at scheduling a date for the e-cycle event. And I've been working on the toxic waste drop-off. So I did distribute a notification to you that shows the items that they are able to collect. We are able to collect multiple different type items like paint, pesticides, antifreeze, and aerosols on the same day. It is going to run somewhere around 12,000 to 15,000 dollars. They are EPA certified to be able to handle these type of chemicals. The Stormwater Authority is willing to pay a portion of that fee for our MCM requirements for MS4. I didn't know if maybe the borough would be interested in either matching or helping with some of the cost and/or having a fee for residents to drop off those materials. So we're kind of still doing a lot of research, but I know there's a lot of individuals that have a lot of these materials stored at their house and garage or their basement that is difficult to dispose of. So if you have any questions about that. The final notices for stormwater, the deadline was today. We will be processing liens later this week on the folks that didn't pay. I think we have approximately 61 individuals that had not paid their bills at this time, somewhere around 10,000 dollars. So that's all I have, and I do not have any motions on the agenda today. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Deb?
I do. Thank you for this list. The highlighted items are just highlighted for.
They were ones that I was maybe recommending. The other issue with the highlighted items are not issue, there's not a price minimum on those items. So say we decided to do propane tanks, we'd have to pay a minimum of 450 dollars, no matter how many came in. So depending on what the needs are, some of the items that we can start with would not have a minimum requirement.
Because I'm seeing like, things like fluorescent bulbs.
Yes.
Ballasts.
Yep.
And flammable liquid.
Yes.
Have, they're not applicable on price minimum, but I know a lot of folks that have those items in the borough.
And we could do those too, sure. And we can do as many as we want in one, one item, but it is price per pound. And he's saying roughly if 200 people sign up, that the cost estimate would be around 12,000 to 15,000 dollars. I was just trying to get some type of ballpark to wrap this around everybody to be able to afford to do this. And at that cost, I think we'd have to, you know, charge a substantial amount per resident. But like I said, the Stormwater Authority is looking at paying maybe a portion of that or half, or, they're still discussing that. We just discussed it at our meeting previous to this. So it might be something maybe the borough could help with as well, or.
And that cost could be considerably higher if we have a tremendous turnout.
Correct. Or we just limit it to 200 people signing up. And if someone comes and, you know, brings five paint cans, or someone else brings 50 paint cans, you know, it's going to make a difference in the, the cost, so.
Thank you.
I had a question, if I could. How do other communities handle that in terms of charges to people who are dropping off these toxic materials?
I don't know many that have done it. I'm going to call around and see if there's some. Someone did mention Cumberland County had some type of program. So I'm going to see how they've been handling it. But generally, you have to be certified, so that would be through the Department of Environmental Protection. So it is going to have to be a company that you hire out and bring in.
Would we ever consider? Would we ever consider, like cooperating with other municipalities too? I mean.
We could do that, but then that would double the amount of folks coming in, double the amount of weight, and double the cost.
I was thinking in terms of sharing the cost, that it might be.
Right.
I mean, but it would be.
I mean, we could do that, but it would still double the cost. So, our 12 to 15, if we were doing 200 people, they had 200 people, then it would be roughly $30,000, so we still were only allowed 200 people.
Okay.
For that cost.
Right. We wouldn't know if it would double it, though. I mean, really.
Right.
It would be good to have a little bit of information from other municipalities.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, this, I think it bears a lot of really deliberative thought here. I mean, we're in this unfortunate conundrum here where the law says we can't just throw these things away, we have to dispose of them safely, but then we do not have a way of doing that. I think we're, we're on the right track here in trying to provide a service for taxpayers and a way to do that, but the cost is extraordinarily prohibitive. I wonder, is there anybody here on council who would like to maybe work on this a little bit more intensely with Deb and see if there isn't a model that might work well for us? I mean, understanding that we're almost certain to incur cost on behalf of the taxpayers. Is this anybody's keen interest?
I'll help Mrs. Butterfield with that. Specifically, just putting out, putting out some feelers amongst, for sure, the small business owners in town. I'm just thinking of some of the businesses that may have some of these things sitting somewhere that they've been storing in their basement, trying to figure out how they're going to get rid of. I know I have a lot of them in my old building. So, I would like to work with Mrs. Butterfield on that as well.
Great. Thank you both.
And we do have a policy, like for the shredding, that it is free for residents, but we have a small charge for non-residents. If we could work out that same type of program. I do have two questions, if I could jump in.
Go for it.
The motor oil, there used to be a place that accepted it, next door to the post office, and for the fluorescent bulbs, there used to be a lumber place in town that accepted fluorescent bulbs. Should we focus on finding that type of place so that it isn't totally the responsibility of the borough?
Yeah, we could do that. That's why I didn't mark those, because I know there are some local places that accept batteries, tires, motor oil, and, and the fluorescent bulbs. So, I was trying to pull out some of the items that we don't have any other means to dispose of.
I think that would be a valuable effort if we could identify those places specifically now, because some of them used to take the things and now do not, so we could update that.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to find out, and I'm happy to ask, even though, because some campuses are outside of the borough, the Gettysburg School District, but what are the campuses doing? What is Gettysburg College doing? What is the school district doing with some of these items like fluorescent bulbs that die and you're not supposed to throw away?
Yeah.
And if we could maybe take a poll of how much maybe someone would be willing to pay to drop off if there has to be a cost incurred? Like, what, what would be an acceptable amount that someone would be willing to pay? $10, $20, $50 to help offset the cost?
Yeah, I almost think it, the, the model from the shredding needs to be flipped upside down and make it borough residents exclusively, but maybe beyond a certain weight, you know, because we don't necessarily want, you know, 10 neighbors all signing up and throwing everything in the back of one station wagon. But, you know, maybe beyond a certain weight limit, we start to charge, you know, something nominal just to kind of offset the expense. Anyway, if you both would please work with Mrs. English on that, I think this is a really good example of how our tiny little town needs to sometimes acknowledge that it's actually a small city. This is one of those services that most towns this size would not be able to absorb, but I think we all, at least most of us, agree that this is a situation that needs to be dealt with, and unfortunately, our waste haulers are not equipped to help residents deal with these materials. So, maybe, maybe in a month or two, you guys come back to us and let us know what you've come up with as a potential strategy? Great. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. English?
I have a comment, yeah. Thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it, because I watch a lot of, well, not a lot of news, but enough news, especially Weather Channel, and I was watching, it was probably a 20-minute segment on the cleanup after the wildfires in California, and they're still cleaning up so many of the hazardous waste, and so I think this is a preemptive move, and I appreciate that we're trying to do something in the event that we ever have a natural disaster here in Adams County or in Gettysburg in particular. So, thank you.
Thank you. I did have one other quick thing. I'm working on a grant for composting, which will also help with our MS4 and MCM requirements for public outreach and education. I will put an article in the spring newsletter about when that will be. Hopefully, if I get funding from this grant, that it would be a free workshop, and the residents that sign up would receive a free composting bin. I'm not taking any reservations, though, until the article goes out and I receive the funding.
All right. Well, you let me know when that's happening, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
If that happens, that would be a great opportunity, I think, to partner with the farm, Adams County Farmers Market, maybe having a table there.
Okay.
With that information for folks that might want to be involved in learning about that.
Absolutely.
100%. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That takes us to parking with Becca.
Good evening. I did provide several reports in the folder this time around. I have my monthly report, I have a pay-by-phone report that went over the past five years, and then I did the end-of-the-year report that just had some charts and graphs complaining, explaining last year from this year, or 2023 to 2024. And on my monthly report, I have the same graphs and charts as normal, and the quarterly LPPs, there was 21 quarterly LPPs purchased, so that was a very popular option to add, whereas people only had the choice of monthly previously. And the parking garage reserve spaces have dropped slightly. And we did finish reprogramming all the meters in January.
So, does that mean you're going to be able to dig into that little research project with Trey Studd?
I have started already.
Okay.
I took some information to them on programming. They were here today, and I did show them the handheld and explained how it all worked, and he was going to look into it.
Very cool. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fissell? All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. That's going to take us to Robbie in Public Works.
Good evening. Hopefully, you all received my report that I submitted. Some highlights on my report, some reporting issues from last year. The leaf collection from last year, we collected 50 single-axle dump truck loads of leaves, estimated at 481.6 cubic yards of leaves for recycling. And the brush collection last year was 132 loads at 924 cubic yards for, for recycling. Christmas trees we're working on for this year, we have 158 of them right now. We will take, collect trees up till the end of February, if any show up. A lot of times, we do get some, some in March sometimes, too. But, and we're getting geared up for the next week's special event where we're using the hard barricades. And the Shade Tree Commission will be meeting tomorrow night and discussing their spring planning locations and reaching out to residents for those locations. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, sir. All right. Chad, the engineer.
Evening, council. First, I want to apologize, I did not submit an electronic version of my report, which is why you have a hard copy in your package, it just didn't get it out in time. So, first, I'll give you a couple of updates that are in my written report, and then I'll come back to the two motions that are on your agenda. The first one, I'm going to skip for now, the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance is, relates to the second motion that's on your agenda, so I'll come back to that. On the second page of my report is the Gateway Connectivity Update, and I did want to just take a minute to pause on something there, so the general public that's, that's listening can, can hear this. At your, at the, at the workshop two weeks ago, we gave a presentation, and one of the feedbacks that we got from you all was that you were interested in getting the public involved, having some design charades, talking to the property owners, those kind of things. We're, we're at a chicken-and-an-egg thing with, with PennDOT, where they don't necessarily want to pay for consultants to start and get, getting engaged with property owners for that effort. We think that we should be doing that. They kind of think that that's a little premature. Their suggestion is that they haven't had a chance to weigh in on the scope, and until they get a chance, they think it's, what if they, they're saying basically, what if we say no to a specific scope? Then you're talking to property owners about something that we haven't approved yet. So, it's a, it's a, the way that I like to think about it is the, is the council's decision on should you do something, it's PennDOT's decision on can you do something. So, they're saying, until we know if you can or can't, why are you engaging people? The other way around, you know, from consultant's perspective, we're looking at getting direction from the Borough Council on what you want to do, the want. I don't know how to go to PennDOT and say this is what the council wants to do until the council says this is what they want to do. And it's hard for the council to, to give me that direction without having the property owners involved. So, there's this chicken, chicken-and-an-egg thing. I think we had a meeting with, with PennDOT, we had, we kind of hashed it all out, Jill was at this meeting. I think what, the way that we left is that we want to make sure that, first of all, there's a narrative that's being put out there that, that first, that this is a very high-level scoping at this point. There's no decisions being made. All of the property owners will absolutely get a chance to be heard. We're going to be talking to all the property owners as we go forward. It's very early in the process. It's going to be months and months and months until we get to a point where we're making any decision on the scope of this project. So, I think that's the first thing. Over the course of the next month, we're going to start talking to some property owners. Jill's kind of leading that charge. I'm going to be there at those meetings. I'm going to be wearing my borough hat at those meetings, not your consultant-through-PennDOT hat, because again, PennDOT isn't ready to start funding that effort with the property owners. They want to first have this, what's called the scoping field view. Scoping field view, again, is a very high-level thing with PennDOT. It's just to say, what is the limits of the project? We're going from here to here. Does it involve bog turtles or, or endangered species? Does it involve culvert pipes, those kind of things? What kind of environmental impacts? We obviously know we're going to have historical impacts with this. So, they're just trying to get a high level, what kind of impacts is this project going to have, before they, they start providing that effort to get into the property owners. They did kind of start working with us and saying that, there's, there's a, a month-long process to get authorized to use the money. This is our flat money that we're talking about, the Federal Lands Access Program. The money's going through the state. It goes through their ECMS system. In order to use that money, we need to get authorized. It's a month-long process. They did say we can go ahead and get that process started. So, we're hoping that right on the, on the heels of our field scoping view with PennDOT, which is going to be somewhere around the second week of March, we're thinking, we'll be able to go right into property owner meetings. So, within the near future, we're going to have these property owner meetings, it's just, we aren't going to have, they're going to be real high-level until we can get PennDOT to engage our consultants. You know, that's when we want to pull in the folks from Michael Baker. Of course, some of those folks are, it's, it costs more money than, than, than what we're willing to put into it at this point, so. Chicken-and-an-egg thing, we're still working on it. It's high-level at this point. I think we'll leave it at that for now. The second item on, that I wanted to give you an update on is the Gettysburg Interloop Project. This is on the next page of my report, and there is a motion on your agenda with the next application for payment. So, again, there's three different projects here, three different phases. The first phase of this is the, the utility work. At this point, all of the borings under the railroad track are done. The street remains closed, however, we've been really fighting with weather, and it's going to remain closed for one more week, is what we're hearing. It's not likely that they're going to have it ready to open up by the end of this week. So, it'll probably go into early next week until they open up the street, and at that point, it'll be just day-to-day closures until they're finished with the project, which is going to be about another month yet. Once we're finished with that work, then we're going to go right into starting to replace the sidewalks, and that's in two different phases. One's the CDBG phase, then the other one's the C2P2 phase, three different projects here. So, my second bullet on my report there is an update on the CDBG component. Did receive bids today. I'm not going to be looking for authorization today on that. That has to get approved by county first, because our CDBG money gets administered through the county planning department. So, once they have, had a chance to review the bids and give us information on that, then I'll be coming to you guys. Now, one of the things I did want to stop on, and maybe I can ask Sarah, I think we had a discussion about adding that to the agenda at your workshop in two weeks from now. And I want to make sure that that's still the plan of action here, is that?
As far as I know, that's still the plan, have that on there, because we have the special meeting with GBSWA, and we can just have that motion during that meeting?
Yeah, so we do have the special meeting for the Stormwater Authority, so I guess what we're going to, we're going to have also at that same meeting before the council meeting, the award of the CDBG curb ramp, I mean, CDBG curbing sidewalk for North Washington Street. Do we need to have a separate decision on that, or is that, how's that get advertised?
Harry?
Do you have a feeling on that?
Advertisement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I work with Ms. Stoll, and we get things advertised. Of course, we advertise what is authorized by council to, so I would think that maybe we should have a motion to authorize that that also be added to that, because that's not the, that's not the purpose of the special meeting. The special meeting is to have.
Right. The special meeting is just a workshop.
Yeah.
Followed by another workshop. So, we would actually have to have another special meeting in there in order to take action.
And, and, and we're, I mean, that's, that's kind of the path that we laid out. If you want to just wait for two more weeks until your next council meeting to award, that's also okay. It's just, we were just trying to get moving as soon as we're done with utility work. We're trying to get moving with replacing the sidewalks. So, that was the goal there, was to save two weeks. Again, if you want to just wait for two more weeks, I don't know that that's the end of the world.
I think it can safely be stated that this project has gone on a little longer than we had initially anticipated. Adding two weeks is not terribly appealing. I'd be more inclined to go workshop, special meeting workshop. Can we advertise that in two weeks' time?
Please go ahead and authorize me to do that, and I will do as instructed.
Mr. Eastman?
It probably, it takes a motion.
All right. So, how would we word that motion? And can we add a motion?
And what we could do is add that as part of, potentially, we could add that as part of the one where you're actually authorizing a, these, probably wouldn't work well there.
No.
I mean, technically, we shouldn't be adding a motion.
Right.
Because we've approved the agenda.
Right. It's not major or minor. It's, it's right in the creamy middle.
Right.
I'm not convinced we can put that motion in. All right. I guess it'll have to wait.
Yeah, and one of the things we can do, Mr. Moon, is, is, we, we know who the low bidder is at this point, the apparent low bidder. We can make some assumptions that we've, this is a conscious Kinsey Construction, this is public knowledge, it's on PennBid, all contractors know it. And, and just as one of the other follow-ups is if, if you can remember, two months ago, we only got one bidder, and that was York Excavating on this project. We had to rebid. CDBG through the county required us to rebid. This time, we got three bidders, and Kinsey came in as a low bidder. So, we can start working with them and getting paperwork and everything ready to go, so that as soon as we get a, an award made, the contracts can be expedited, and we can try to get them going as soon as possible. One nice thing with this next phase. One nice thing with this next phase is there isn't materials that have a lag time where we have to wait on, like precast structures or anything like that. So as soon as we basically give them a notice to proceed, they can get started. So I'll do what I can on my end to keep... To get that moving, so that's expedited, and we'll just wait till the council meeting then, I guess, in March to award officially.
You have no other mechanism for setting a special meeting?
Well, we could potentially have the... You as the president of council, setting a special meeting. So that's another option.
Apart from this agenda?
Apart from this agenda.
All right, let's do it that way. We'll talk after this, what we have to do there. Okay. We'll plan on setting a special meeting, but it'll have to be apart from this agenda.
And either way, there is a third component to this project, and maybe this might go into play as well, Mr. Moon, with that decision, is the DCNR, C2P2 is the last phase of this project. So we still need to go through the whole bidding process with that. We're going to be looking into... I say the last thing that I gave with that update is June through August. The goal is to have everything done before the kids go back to college in August this summer. So there is a third phase that we're going to have to do anyways. So if we can save two weeks, great. If we can't, again, I'm not sure if it's the end of the world.
Right. Okay, understood.
So that's the update. Oh, so and then there's a motion on your agenda about that project. It's just for the next application for payment. The motion's for $284,336.97. Those are exactly contract pay items. Nothing changed, nothing different with that. So I'll just pause there. It's just basically an administrative item.
Okay, back to page one.
Yep, so the second motion is with regards to the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance Contract. We put this out to bid last month. We opened bids on Friday. We... I call it okay bids, but not great. So our budget for the project was $80,000. The low bidder came in at around $106,000. I gave you an email sitting in front of your place. You all should have an email. It's stapled at the top left, two pages. You'll see on the first page, there's some "O"rs with three bullets. Essentially gave you three options for how you could handle this. The motion that's on your agenda has some blanks, assuming that the low bidder would fit within our budget. Unfortunately, it doesn't. So I'm giving you some options on how to award this, should you not want to increase your budget. Obviously, you have the option of increasing your budget, up to $106,000 from 80. That's the first bullet that's there. The second bullet is the one that I'm going to be recommending, if you want to stay within the $80,000, is to award only items that fit within that budget. And then there's the third option, which you always have the option to reject these bids and rebid. I'm not sure there's a huge advantage there. And part of the reason why I say that is because the one item that we are most interested in doing, we being borough staff, engineering, I consulted with Becca, with Robbie, is the stairs. The stair treads in the parking garage are not great. The second page of your... Of the email here does provide the bid results. Again, I asked you to keep these confidential, these unit prices, so I'm not going to say specific numbers here in case we do decide to rebid. But I did want you to see these, so that it can kind of help inform your decision. The first one's the Mobe cost. We always have to do that. You can see that low bidder here is Arch Masonry Incorporated. The mobilization, we have to do that. The second item is the stair tread replacement. That's the item that I'm talking about. We would really like to get that done. That's the top priority here. Obviously, that fits within your $80,000 budget. The next one's the concrete spall repair. That's some overhead spall repair. We would like to do that as well. And then the next three items, bid items 903, 904, and 905, they kind of all go together. Whenever you power wash, seal, paint, those things kind of all have to go together. You can't do one without the other ones. So unfortunately, we're going to have to chop all three of those. That is, with the exception of 903 does have some joints on Deck Five that are allowing water to be leaking into the women's bathroom, and we'd like to get that done at this time. So if you would pick those items, again, that's the mobilization, the stair tread replacement, the concrete spall repair, and some of the crack sealing in Deck Five, we can fit that comfortably within your budget. So the motion... So the second bullet that's back to the first page of your agenda has a slightly different-worded motion versus the one that's on your agenda, that has still awarding to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Arch Masonry Incorporated, but it has a contingency based on successful negotiation of the ward of the items to get the budget within $80,000. And the way that I word it like that is because our contracts do allow us to kind of pick and choose items, but not if it would impact the... Who was the successful low bidder, first of all? So we can't do that. That would be illegal. And secondly, contractor should have the opportunity to negotiate unit prices. If you cut a significant amount of the contract out, the unit prices typically go up, right? That's the concept here. So there is a chance that he might come back and want to negotiate some bid items. Should we get to a point where we can't negotiate that? The contingency would fail.
We'd rebid.
We would be rebid.
Okay. So everybody, please look at the CS Davidson report that you have there, not the email, but the report with the letterhead. That first bolded paragraph, the last sentence, is key here. So if we approve just the work that fits within the budget at $80,000, those items that Chad just called out, that gives us some flexibility here moving forward. If we exclude the power washing, crack sealing, and painting of Deck Two, these items could be either done in-house or pushed to the next cycle of bidding. I did talk to Robbie about this just before the meeting, and he agrees this work could be done in-house, but that doesn't mean it's not going to have some costs associated with it as well. It could be... I mean, obviously, there'd be labor hours, but then also there are supplies, materials, and equipment that would have to be purchased for the crack sealing as well. So if we go with the $80,000 budgeted level of the work and look to either complete these tasks on our own or push them off until next year, into the next bidding cycle, Robbie and his team might come back to us in, you know, a month or two months and say, okay, here's what it would cost me to do this work this year. Do you want me to proceed, or do you want me to... Or do we want to hold off till next time? So it's not necessarily saying that going with the $80,000 budgeted amount means the work won't get done. It just means it won't be done as timely as we had initially hoped with the bidding process. So we really have two options in front of us. One is we either make a budget adjustment this year to pay the full value of the lowest bidder, so we'd have to pay... Am I allowed to say the number?
Yeah, you can say that number, that $106,000.
So we'd be looking at a budget adjustment of about $26,500, $600. Or we can go with what we've... You know, option two is we can go with what we've budgeted and just kind of cut back on a little bit of the scope of the work, but nothing that's going to lead to the collapse of the structure or whatever.
None of this is imminent failure type of thing. This is maintenance of the parking garage. We don't like to kick the can if we don't have to, but we can revisit it next year, the following year, if we have to.
Okay, so option one is pay the full amount and adjust the budget. Option two is pay the budgeted amount and hold off on a few of the bid items. So I just want to get everybody's opinions here. Mr. Carr?
I'm for option two.
Okay. Ms. Sanders?
Yeah, I'm for staying within the budget.
Mr. Berger?
Same.
Does Butterfield?
Yes, that's... Same for me. This might be a naive question, but the insurance that we have on the garage would not cover any type of these repairs, correct?
No, I don't believe so.
Maintenance, yes.
And Patty, too?
Up to.
Okay, so it looks like we'll go ahead with the second... The second option. So when we get to that... When we get to that motion, whoever makes it will use the name H... I'm sorry, Arch Masonry Incorporated, and we'll put in the $80,000 as the...
No, I think you would just word it... Unless Mr. Eastman has a different suggestion, but I would just word it exactly how it's worded in the second bullet on my email, because it's kind of a different way. It's a different way of wording it than their... At their low bid.
Yeah, and I would... It's the opinion of the engineer that the contractor is properly qualified.
It is.
So I would... If we use that second bullet motion, we should indicate it's to the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder.
Agree.
And that's per Borough Code requirements.
So it would be this motion here that is in the engineer's report?
You can... I don't really have a problem with you doing it. Essentially, this subject matter is part of the advertised agenda. We're not slipping anything in.
Right, sure.
So it would be my recommendation that you would use Mr. Claybaugh's language with just that one modification.
Add the qualified.
Qualified before.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chad?
Nothing else, Ed.
All right. Would anybody care to make his first motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application for payment number five to York Excavating Company in the amount of $284,336.97 for the North Washington Street Water and Storm Project, as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And then the second motion.
I'll make a motion toward the 2025 Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance Contract to the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder, Arch Masonry Incorporated, contingent on successful negotiation, award of only the bid items that can be done within the Borough's budgeted amount of $80,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Claybaugh.
Sure.
That takes us to the chief. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, and I actually remember to turn my mic on tonight, so... You all have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on that. I would like to cover something outside of my report. We had a visit today from two gentlemen from the employer support of the Guard and Reserve, which is part of the Department of Defense. And we... Sergeant Evans has been given an award for supporting Guard and Reserve, specifically Officer Harris, who put us in for the award for being a supportive employer and helping him out. It's a great honor. There's only one given in the state to an individual supervisor. I brought it tonight, and the gentleman that were here today presented this to Sergeant Evans. And Tony, Officer Harris had some very kind words to say and was very complimentary to the Department of Sergeant Evans for the support of him and his efforts in defending our nation, in the Reserve's support. And the gentleman that were here gave us a lot of information, like this resource guide and things like that, and they were very appreciative of the support of the Reserve and Guard component of the military. So it's quite an honor, and it was quite flattering and that Officer Harris, after being here such a brief time, part-time and then full-time, were to put us in for this and take the time. So I'm very proud of Sergeant Evans for getting this and proud of Officer Harris for thinking of us.
Yeah, that's cool.
And unless there's an invisible motion for the Police Department, we have no motions there, so...
All right. Any questions for the chief?
I had a question for the chief. Chief Lenny, I have heard from about six of my constituents in Ward One who have concerns about what will happen in our community if ICE were to come in to the community and how our local police department would respond. And I know that we received, all of us received a letter late today from one of the six people that I heard from concerning this matter, and I'm just wondering, have you any thoughts on that in terms of how the Police Department would respond?
Yes, we would respond in a supporting role. We will provide traffic direction and support to ICE or any federal agency, for that matter. As I've said multiple times, it's not within my purview to permit somebody to break the law. So, you know, we evaluate a request and act on that request based on that, based on contact that we've had previously with ICE. I mean, we... If we check somebody in the national computers, the Commonwealth Law Enforcement Assistance Network, or NCIC, and it shows a warrant or some type of detainer for ICE, we would check that information, make sure that it was a properly executed warrant, and act on it in that motion or that manner. So, yeah, we would support as per our policy, and we wouldn't serve those warrants, but we would provide a support function.
But the Borough has no legal obligation, right, to assist ICE if they were to come into the community? Am I correct in that understanding?
We have an obligation to provide for safety, and we would provide that safety.
What would constitute safety, then? In other words, if people are going about doing their work in the community, kids are in school, workers are at their job, how does... What does that look like in terms of the safety issue that you're concerned about?
So my concern is a pursuit, a gunfight, a fight in the street, injuries to bystanders, injury to the law enforcement officers, injuries to passerbys. We will go, we will guard against that. As far as serving the ICE warrants, no, we're not going to serve them for them.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
We're not going to serve ICE warrants for them. If they're here doing a raid, it's not... We're not going to go serve that warrant for them. If we run across somebody on a detainer and we get that information through our law enforcement networks, and it is a legitimate detainer or warrant, we will act on that. We will place them in jail, that sort of thing, if that's what is requested. But as far as any type of raids or anything like that, we will, again, provide that support function and try to maintain safety around it.
How would we place them in jail? My understanding is that the county will not house ICE detentions.
If the county won't take them, they won't take them, and that's problematic itself, because that's a safety issue. Then if we let somebody that have a warrant go, and then they have to come out and do a raid, and then, again, it lets bystanders, citizens, other people be in jeopardy based on that transfer of custody when they were already in custody. So in other words, you're going to have to go out and recapture them. And everything that's involved in making an arrest is involved, and you never know when something's going to go sideways. You can't predict these things. So if somebody's already in custody and they're safe, a simple holdover to jail, I don't know what the county's policy is, and I guess we'll run across that. We've never had issue before.
Anything else?
Is it worth checking into with the county? I mean, is that something you would do as a preemptive to find out, since what Mr. Millen...
We're going to do this on a case-by-case basis. So if we run on somebody and we contact, and there's a judicial order to detain, you know, we'll contact, and if the county says no, then we have no way of holding him here.
All right.
In the letter that we received today, that council received, and I think the mayor received, the chief received, and the Borough Manager received, it was suggested that we, as a council, would consider... The request was to consider a policy. So I would just ask my council members to look at the letter that we received and to look at the request and perhaps have a discussion about that, if we could.
Yeah, we can. I would recommend that each member take the time to read that letter. I would further recommend you take the time to review the department's internal policy, number 414. And sometime in the coming months, once we've all had a chance to study this a little bit better, perhaps we can have a discussion about this in a workshop.
Right, and I just want to just add that the phone calls and the emails that I received from six constituents had expressed a lot of concerns and concerns for the people, our neighbors, our friends, perhaps coworkers that are in the community that are working jobs... that are in the community, that are working jobs, that are holding jobs, that are being educated, that are paying taxes. And they are our neighbors and, in some cases, colleagues. And so I would hope that we would take that into consideration as well.
All right. Mrs. Butterfield, did you have something for the chief?
Yes.
One thing on that, Matt, if we were-
Can you hold on one moment? She was actually-
Sure.
Ahead of Patty and then, go ahead.
The incident with someone impersonating an officer and demanding ID from a pedestrian, is there concern that that pedestrian may be a victim of identity theft because they turned over two modes of ID to this impersonator?
I would be concerned about that, yes. That incident is under investigation. We have yet to speak with the victim. The victim has not been identified to us. So we are starting from, from a disadvantage, if you will. Without being able to speak with the victim, get direct knowledge, maybe for dire, their description of what happened, it, it makes investigating this situation much more difficult. So we don't know exactly what transpired, what the victim gave them, how, how the thing was, came about, other than what we're being told based on an interview of that victim from a non-law enforcement or non-investigative source.
So you don't know at this time if that impersonator was in some type of uniform or an official-looking hat, anything?
I only have in dark-colored clothing. That's, that's what we have. Everything that, that was released is, is basically what we have. And we were, we're talking to folks. We've, we've gone over timelines. We've, we've looked through video, and we're still doing that. But at this juncture, we, we really need to talk to that victim. And that's problematic for the investigation.
So do you have any advice for someone if they are approached by someone in automobile when they're walking down High Street and ask for ID? What do you recommend?
I would say if they're not an identifiable police officer, you know, ask them their name and their badge number. Any one of our officers or any officer I know will give that information readily. I would say, ask that officer, do you mind if I call 911 to verify who you are? I would, you know, the, the similar precautions like that. Pay attention to their car. Is it a police car? Are there lights on it? If you're talking out the window, do you see a computer in the car? Is there a radio in the car? Is there noise coming from the car that sounds like radio transmissions? All, all these things, I, I would just be very, as vigilant as you can. And, and again, you know, ask name and badge number. Ask if they mind if you call 911. Ask, ask the person to, ask if you could have a supervisor respond. If, if there's one available and it doesn't cause any type of, of safety concern, then, you know, the officers are going to say, yeah, come on, I'll have a supervisor come down. If there's not one available, then, you know, maybe a second officer that's on duty can come down. But if somebody's questioning and, and, you know, and if the majority of these contacts that any one of our officers would make are going to be a marked police car with somebody in uniform. If it's not a marked police car, then you can look at those other identifiers. If it, if there's something on there, you know, indicates where the, where it's from. And, and any type of law enforcement officer is going to provide some type of identification. That's, that's my best advice. Be vigilant, ask if you can call 911 to verify, ask them for name and badge number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bales?
I just wanted to clarify, we, I think we, that the chief kind of laid out what the policy was right now as far as executing an ICE warrant, which you wouldn't be doing. But you want us to review that and then make suggestions to, like, change the criminal law code or-
So, no, because walking across the border without a document is not actually a crime. It's a civil charge. So what the issue is here is that our officers indefinitely detaining somebody without a criminal charge opens the borough up to some pretty dramatic liability. So I would recommend we take some time, read this letter that we were presented with today, read policy 414. And there's probably some other documentation we can review as well. I think what Patty was saying is that there, what she was approached by members of the community about was the possibility of the council coming to a formal resolution as to direction for the police department as to cooperating or not with federal law enforcement. Without an act of Congress to formally deputize local law enforcement, they cannot enforce federal law. Only federal officers can do that. So there is some liability associated with indefinite detention of somebody who hasn't been criminally charged. So that, that's the, the gist of the letter that we were given today. It came late in the day. You may not have had a chance to see it.
I see.
So take some time, just think about it. And perhaps we may have an opportunity to have a discussion around this. Positive that this is going to touch all of our lives in the coming year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for the chief?
I do. Along those lines, it was kind of interesting. Well, you pointed out that federal law enforcement would suggest or recommend or require or ask one of those, one of those things for you to enforce immigration laws. You wouldn't be issuing the warrants. What would the cost be involved? And would the federal government be responsible for reimbursing our local government for any of those services?
I don't know what the costs involved would be. And when I say we would, we will, and it's not entirely true that we can't enforce federal law. And it's, if there is a proper warrant issued that's signed by judicial authority, we're going to ex, we're going to deal with that all day long. We're going to make that, we're going to use that. So there's some question as to some detainers that come out, and those are the things that we would, we're dire if we find out that they're wanted. And generally, those types of things aren't entered in our system anyway. So, you know, it's been my experience that ICE wants folks that are committing crimes.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the costs involved for, like, borough resources, borough taxpayer dollars going to enforce federal law or, you know, if it's a federal crime, and what that would, what that cost would be. I'm looking, like, nominally what that cost would be to us as taxpayers.
That's an understandable question, but the flip side of that coin would be the number of times that other law enforcement agencies, including federal law enforcement agencies, have come to our defense-
Sure.
To, like, for example-
Oh, I understand that.
During some of the more chaotic protests on the battlefield in 2017 and 2020. And we did not get billed for that either. So.
Oh, I understand. I was just wondering if there is a cost and what that cost would be.
Sure, and there could be, but there's also a benefit to that mutual aid.
Oh, yep, I understand federalism, certainly. Just curious.
I just want to get something straight. Whether we have, like, a blanket policy, whether our agency could do anything with ICE. Your experience, for the most part, it wouldn't be somebody that just came across the border illegally. Usually ICE has to deal with people that have a warrant for other serious crimes, correct?
Yes, that is, that's generally been, that's always been how I have come in contact with ICE.
So, I mean, I, you know, the narrative of neighbors, I appreciate that, and I'm a school teacher as well. But I would be very reticent to have a blanket policy that they wouldn't be able to deal with a, somebody that has rape or murder or that type of-
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to put that out there.
No, no, I'm, and fully agree. You know, there's, there's a, so, I mean, there's, there's two different sort of very scary narratives going on in the world right now. One is that, you know, all immigrants are murder rapists. And the other one is that the government is coming to round up everybody. Like, both of those narratives are terrifying. And both of them are, you know, sort of couched in a percentage of truth, and that's, that's scary to people. I've been contacted by people since the first of the year in the neighborhood, in the community, who have concerns. And not just activists, citizens. I mean, the incident with this student who is afraid to talk to law enforcement, I mean, she needs to talk to law enforcement, but she doesn't feel comfortable. And the reason for that is because of the stories that have grown up around this, this topic, right? So on one hand, we have people who would compel us to allow immigration police to round up anyone and everyone. And there's a precedent for this, right? It was just a few years ago that ICE did raid local restaurants and groceries. And the people that they took out of this community were not all criminals. But it happened.
I would point out in that case, Mr. Mundy did not ask us to serve those warrants. They're serving their own warrants.
No, 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 no. So there, you know, there's truth on both sides of this story, right? And people have perfectly good reasons to be concerned from both, both angles. This is going to come up in public discussion in the, in the coming year. And our community will be looking to us for leadership on it. So I am, I think it is an intelligent and thoughtful thing for us to all start educating ourselves on this subject now. Does anybody else have any further questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, sir. It takes us to the Office of the Manager and Treasurer. Mr. Gable is out on vacation, so Sarah is going to pick up all of that for us.
Good evening, yes. In the absence of Manager Gable, I have a few items to report. All COVID loans are paid in full. So that was from the emergency loan program that Borough Council authorized for the local businesses during the COVID pandemic.
Cool.
So they're all paid in full. All funds look good. The general fund is currently at $1.6 million. And Fund 18, which is the capital projects, has a total of $645,000. And Fund 30, the capital reserve fund, has a total of $2.3 million. And both those, Fund 18 and Fund 13, are, they both support the large capital projects that the council is currently undertaking. And the, the build grant, that has been submitted successfully. That's the Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, which is formerly the RACE Grant.
Right.
So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Right. All right. Any questions for Ms. Stull? All right. Let's start that list of motions, please. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 021025-1, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application requesting in Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development build funds through the United States Department of Transportation to advance construction of a multimodal transportation, infrastructure and streetscape improvement project in the historic downtown area of the borough with a total cost of the build scope of work construction of $17,793,229.00 and committing the build 21% local match requirement in non-federal local funds for the Borough of Gettysburg construction of the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next one, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Gettysburg Fire Department active volunteer eligibility list as submitted by the chief of the fire department for the Gettysburg Borough Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program and to authorize the issuance of the 2024 tax credit certificates accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just want to take a moment and point out that this is a program that the state has made available to municipalities that we are one of the few that take advantage of. This allows us to offer a tax incentive to those who participate in the volunteer fire department. They have a certain number of hours they have to fulfill every year. And once they do, they're excused from their property tax burden here in the borough. This is both an incentive for people to volunteer with the fire department as well as really the least thing we could do to thank these people for putting their lives on the line. We started this last year, and I just want to continue to, or the year before, express gratitude that this is something we continue to do. All those in favor, please say aye. Or did we, yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Douglas McKenney to be paid from the police pension plan effective February 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Pension fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution zero, number 021025-2 to excuse the police from making contributions to the police pension fund for fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the zoning hearing motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution number 021025-3, appointing Jennifer Yablonsky as a member of the zoning hearing board of the Borough of Gettysburg to complete the remainder of the five-year term of office of Roger Goodacre, which term expires in January 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a point of clarification. Janu Yablonsky currently serves as an alternate, so just wanted to mention that.
Yep.
Thanks.
And we're grateful to her for stepping up into the full-time role on the zoning hearing board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And the meeting with the Stormwater Authority.
I'll make a motion to set a special meeting for a joint work session of the Borough Council and the Board of the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority to be conducted on Monday, February 24, 2025, commencing at 6:30 PM for the purposes of receiving information and discussing matters relative to the maintenance, repair, replacement, construction, and reconstruction of the channel walls of Stevens Run within the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That's going to take us to our liaison reports, and we'll start this evening as we always do with Jill Sellers and Main Street Gettysburg.
Thank you, and good evening. Just a few notes. Going back to the Build grant, so formerly the RACE grant, that was submitted at the end of January. Its due date was January 30th, so that was submitted on time. That is the fifth round application, for anybody that's keeping track of, of how we're pursuing that. Main Street Gettysburg was able to collect over 30 letters of support from our local, state, and federal officials, as well as residents and business owners. So, our thanks to, to folks that stepped up and sent in those letters. It really shows that our community is following this project and is interested in and supporting it. The FLAP grant, as Chad mentioned, was one of the first things that was told to me when I started this job. So, I've been here almost five years, and they're going to almost let us use that money now. So, it is a long process. It is, it is a long and arduous process. I want to remind the public as well, no design decisions have been made. So, if there's concerns about things, this is, this is a slow-moving train, clearly. This process started long before I was here with public meetings. It's been going on for almost 10 years. So, it's, it's an exercise in patience, for sure. There will be meetings going forward, and in fact, Main Street Gettysburg is going to start with a meeting for local businesses. And this is something that I am taking on as an organization. It's not, and others, public meetings will follow according to the, the requirements that have to happen as this, as this plan rolls out, and as, you know, there, there will be opportunities. But the fact that, the fact is, is that those meetings have been happening since the master plan was adopted in 2018. So, that process will continue accordingly. But on February 18th, I am going to meet with the businesses and give them an opportunity to ask some questions and really talk about, in part, what the process is and where we are in that. It's, it's incredibly complex process, often with confusing and contradictory answers, almost, as any bureaucratic process can be. So, being privileged to those, most of those meetings, I find myself sometimes confused. So, I can completely understand why the public doesn't, has concerns and, and needs an opportunity to, to engage with that, and that will be made available. So, stay tuned for, for more information on that. And please, I encourage anybody to reach out to me. If you've got questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer it. If I can't answer it, I'll certainly find the answer. Moving on, next project, Gettysburg Welcome Center. So, we're continuing down that road. That is congressional appropriation, one point, two, $7 million, which is wonderful, but there's the process that we have to go through to get that. So, we are on the fourth of four sections of Section 106, and we are down to creating a memorandum of agreement to figure out how we're going to mitigate the, the measures of, of replacing the building that's there. We've, we've already taken big strides to do that. We have, I already have a wayside marker in my office ready to be put in that location telling of the history of the wine breeder tannery, things that aren't represented now. People have no idea what was there at the time. It wasn't that, it wasn't that building. It was a vacant lot at the time. And so, I think we're really going to be able to tell some stories around that and how we're going to document that. But that is the next step. I'd also encourage everyone, we are coming down to the wire on the Wareheim Challenge Grant. The J. William Wareheim Foundation offered us $100,000 in a match grant, and we are really, really close. So, if you haven't given to this, to this project, now's the time. And now is the time because your donation will count twice. Because for every dollar that you give, the Warehams are going to give up to $100,000 in, in a match. So, if you can help us get us past that finish line, I would be ever grateful. Donate online or give me a call. This weekend, unless Mayor's going to announce it, but no. Gettysburg Loves Love is back at Gettysburg Hotel. Mayor Freeling will be officiating over a vow renewal ceremony on Saturday at 3:00. So, I encourage you to register online. And just a heads up, if, if we have inclement weather, we do have an, an alternate venue that's indoors. So, we're, we're planning ahead and keeping our fingers crossed. And lastly, my thanks to all our volunteers, and we are planning a luncheon for our volunteers in March. So, stay tuned for more information on that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Jill? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on all of those projects. Chad Allen, Gara?
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Chris, GMA?
Yeah, North Washington with the GIL, the water mains are in. About 70% of the connections to the houses are in, too. Probably a couple more weeks and they'll be complete. The Andrews well, getting the land development plan through the township. Process is going well, and we're getting permits by the state. We're getting close to having that complete as well. And the Interceptor also is not starting this week as planned because of the weather. But we're going to start that next week, starting on Water and Stratton and working our way to North Washington, all told, probably about a nine-month process for that phase of the Interceptor.
All right. Thank you. Judy, the bid.
The bid is actively involved in the old-time baseball celebration that happens every year. And there was some discussion at the last meeting as to how each business that was participating actively, either with special prices or book signings or what have you, needed some way to mark that, that business was participating. So, I found online, the magic place online, ribbon with a baseball motif. And Jill and I will get together soon and figure out, either we will make bows or we'll find someone from the Arts Council to make bows, or we'll just turn over to the Steinware merchants links of ribbon and say, here, make a bow. But they can mark the participating businesses with baseball ribbons.
I've been staring at those all night, wondering where you're going with them, so. All right, thank you. Mayor Freeling, the Boroughs Association.
The January 20th meeting was postponed due to inclement weather. The next meeting is going to be February 24th. Whoops.
The January 20th meeting was postponed due to inclement weather. The next meeting is going to be February 24th at 6:30 PM at the Adams County Emergency Services Center on Green Meyer Road. If you're coming, RSVP because they're going to have pizza for people. The speaker will be Adams County Commissioner Marty Qualley, who will present an update on broadband connectivity, as well as the Chesapeake Bay program.
All right, thank you.
Also, please note inclement weather will follow the Gettysburg School District guidelines. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Judy, the COG.
The Council of Government continues seeking municipalities in Adams County that need cybersecurity help and advice. I'm a member of the Collaboration Committee of COG, and identifying those municipalities in need have been the challenge. But some helpers from Penn State University have stepped up, and that cybersecurity effort throughout the county will continue.
All right, thank you. Patty, the Happy?
Yep, Happy met last week, and Happy is working with property owners along Boyd School Road to increase sections of the trail, working with them on that, trying to recruit property owners to participate.
Cool. Judy, ACPO?
ACPO will meet on the 26th of this month at the Ag Center, and I will attend, so I'll have more to report next time on the activities of ACPO.
All right. Did the trail feasibility
Nope.
thing convene?
No.
Okay. Anything on recycling? Judy?
Yes. Recycling was picked up today, I understand, community-wide. Trash was not picked up community-wide today because of a truck incident with waste management. I am told that they will strive to pick up the trash that was not picked up today, and the people who are scheduled, Leslie, well, it will happen early tomorrow. So, let's hope for no high winds to blow all the trash containers that are sitting in our curbside waiting to be picked up. Do not blow them over. I have invited Waste Management to come to another sit-down that we do periodically. I gave them three dates in the next two weeks from which to choose. As soon as that date is sent, I'll notify the staff, and they're all invited to come and meet the Waste Management folks and bring any questions in or comments and/or complaints that they have.
All right, thank you. You all have the fire and EMS reports in your folders. That will take us to elected officials' comments. Mayor Freeling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Pennsylvania Workforce Development Board, our meet, next meeting is going to be February 18th, and I'm going to be introduced as the Chair of the Education Committee. I consider it an honor because that not only affects Gettysburg, Adams County, but Pennsylvania on how to recruit and retain teachers, maybe changing the qualifications, that you don't need a degree in teaching or transfer responsibilities. These are just some of the things that are under consideration. And another thing that Commissioner Qualley is talking about is the importance of broadband, especially in rural areas, which really became an issue during COVID. That mothers, I heard, that mothers were driving out to parking lots to get connectivity. That's a problem. So, that's one of the things. Also, I will be at the Governor's Residence for Black History Month, and that's the second, the 19th. And I would just like to say two things. Jean Green put on a wonderful program this weekend where I got to meet and hear Frederick Douglass and John Brown. It was really a fascinating program. It was held at the Park Service. The auditorium was filled. They had to turn away 20 people. It was just really interesting about how these peoples, their life connected. And so, it was just an excellent program. They're going to do more in the future. And I would like to also acknowledge Nancy Lilly, who retired from the Y. I went to her reception. It was just absolutely wonderful what this woman has done for her community as a teacher, and then with the Y, helping women find jobs, write resumes, working with programs. Nancy has really done a lot, but she's now retired, and I just want to give a shout out to her. I gave her a proclamation and a key to the city, excuse me, borough. So, I just wanted to mention Nancy Lilly is a wonderful person and has given so much to this community. That's all I have.
Could not agree more.
Okay, okay, one more thing. I'm sorry. I forgot. Memorial Day parade, the agenda is still being made. However, the USS Gettysburg will not be participating this year. They're at sea. That's it. But one more time for Nancy Lilly.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials' comments? All right. That's going to take us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. You can speak on any topic. However, we do ask that you still restrict yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, speak directly into the microphone. Please list your name and address of residence.
Hi, my name's Don Meritz. I live at 61 East Broadway, Broadway in the borough. And I'm the anonymous person who wrote the letter about immigration issues. I was, first of all, I want to thank Borough employees and council members for, very sincerely, thank you for your service. I know nobody's extravagantly paid, and you put in a lot of time, and it's a lot of work, and it really is a public service for, from which we all benefit. So, thank you. I was also really encouraged by the tenor of the discussion that took place, the brief discussion that took place about, about the issue of immigration, and to hear comments, I don't want to say both sides, but considered comments from people about, about the issue. And I hope that the, the borough continues those discussions and comes up with something that we can live with without, I'm not suggesting, we don't want to put a, a target on our backs, but we want to be welcoming to the immigrant community here, which in my, I can't believe it, 50 years now here in Adams County, has grown really substantially and really contributes so much to, to the community in so many ways. So, I think we've done a good job overall in, in welcoming people from other countries. There's Manos Inuitas, for, for instance. But, and this, we're forced to deal with the immigration issue because of things going on at, at the national level. So, I hope that we continue this, that you'll take this up and come up with something that protects our, our neighbors. I've, I don't want to go into the, to the legal stuff. That's the 10 or 15 pages of that. That's, I hope, I hope it's expressed in a, in a way that, that's clear and that you can understand. So, again, I really appreciate the tenor of the discussion that I heard tonight, and thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments tonight? Last chance? All right. So, tonight, we're doing something a little different than usual. We're going to be recessing into our executive session. When we return, there may or may not be a single motion having to do with our collective bargaining agreement. So, I can't predict how long our executive session will go. Folks are welcome to stay here in the room. We will recess to the Gettysburg Room for our discussion. You're welcome to stay to the end. We will adjourn directly following a motion that we may or may not choose to make. So, with that, we will recess to executive session. Again, the public can stay here if they like, council, and necessary staff will meet in the Gettysburg Room. Thank you. We are reconvening at 9:08. Would anybody care to make the motion before us tonight?
Make a motion to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Teamsters Local 776 for the purposes of ratifying the annual salary of Officer Eric Wenrick, which was erroneously incorporated into the current prevailing collective bargaining agreement, CBA, with the understanding that Officer Eric Wenrick's correct seniority date will be used to calculate Officer Wenrick's annual salary and the successive CBA, which will be negotiated in 2026. Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, is authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.